So, um, the call will be in order, uh, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we, uh, move our table, everything, and go right now to, uh, eight, in business. Executive session five oh four, four oh five, six, eight, dash one, person on the sheet.
I make a motion, we go to executive session four oh five, six, eight, dash one, person on. At six thirty-one.
Five.
Five thirty-one.
Now second, Bob.
All in favor? Okay, um, this executive session is a little different than others. As the employee being discussed has requested that it be held in public forum. This has been confirmed off here, but for the record, as well, Mr. Mallory can confirm you understand, uh, your options, and yes, you request this to be in a possession. I do, yes. Okay, I'm gonna turn, turn it over to Tom Risher, and slowly, over here.
All right, good evening, thank you. Uh, so we are here tonight, um, to give concerns from the transfer station superintendent, supervisor, Bob Mann, that, uh, concerns that he has with the employee, Mr. Mallory. The first concern... First concern is on August fourth. And it says that on August fourth, um, on August fourth, at ten fifty-five AM, Jeff Mallory was told by his supervisor that he had a project to do, or a project for him. Said project was to assemble a new loading ramp at the time. Uh, Jeff shook his head, said no, and said that that was construction work, and continued to sit on his stool at the compact area. So I'm gonna start with you, Mr. Mann, uh, you're gonna walk us through, um, the approach, everything that happened regarding that situation, and then we will give the employee a chance to rebut.
Well, you, you just read it, which is exactly how it all happened.
So nothing more, nothing less that you wanna add?
No, nothing left, I could, I, I stopped the conversation at that point.
Okay, so when he said no, you just said okay?
I walked away, yeah.
So you did nothing to add?
I had nothing to add to it.
Okay, um, any questions for the supervisor yet at this point?
Has he ever refused to do any work like that in the past?
No.
There was, there was no conversation on, um, safety or anything like that at the time?
Mm-mm, no.
Okay, um, I guess...
So that, we're gonna turn it over to Jeff, and he's gonna walk us, walk us through, uh, from when the supervisor walked up to you. And do you agree with this statement?
No, because, um, I was asked a couple months earlier, and I told him I'd be willing to do it on a day we weren't open to the public. And that, that day was a Wednesday, Wednesdays are usually busy for us, so...
All right, so do you know when you, when he first asked you?
It was after he got a quote on having it done in steel by, um, the Langley boys.
So this, this happened on August fourth, you had to enter the...
Uh, I'd say a couple months ago.
Months prior to that?
I told him I'd be happy to come in on a day we weren't open to the public.
Okay, so you guys, walk us through what happened on that day first. So sometime in June, July, he came up and asked you to install, to build that same ramp?
He, no, he just said that their price was too high, and he was thinking that I could build it for them.
Okay, what did you say?
And I said, "That's fine, but I'll do it on a day we're not open to the public for regular business." I have twenty-something areas I'm responsible for now.
Did he, um, did he respond when you told him that?
He just chuckled and said, "You won't do it, huh?" And I said, "No, I will do it, just on a day we're not open to the public."
Okay, so before we get to August fourth, Bob, walk us through, did that, did you have a conversation with him about this ramp prior to this August fourth incident?
The only conversation I had was when I was thinking about getting it made out of steel. And, um, check with Mr. Langley to see if we could do it. He gave me a price, and, uh, the price was way too high, and I never mentioned to Jeff about him building it, no.
So you never asked him prior to it?
I didn't ask him to build it, no.
Okay, all right, so let's go to, let's jump to August fourth. Walk us through what happened on that day.
He just walked over and said, "I got a little project for you," and I said, "What is it?" And he says, "I want you to build the ramp," and I says, "No, I'm not gonna do it today, 'cause it's Wednesday, Wednesdays are all busy days." And he said, "Why not?" And I said the same reasons as before.
And what happened next?
And then Saturday, um, he came over and asked me again, he says, "So..."
Oh, just on, just on the fourth?
Oh, that was it, that was the end of it. He walked away, yeah.
So you're saying that you told him that you, you wouldn't do it because it was, um, it was a busy day of the week, nothing to do with the construction?
I would kinda like to do it on when not open to the public, so I can keep track of my other heavies.
Bob, did that happen, in your opinion?
No, it happened just exactly like I wrote it here. That he shook his head no, and he said, "No, that was construction work."
So before we move to Saturday, which I know is gonna involve you, David, does the board have any questions for Jeff regarding, uh, what he's describing as the first time they had the conversation, and then this particular time on August fourth?
Did you ever say anything about rate of pay?
No, I was, he told me that the Langley boys wanted twenty-two hundred dollars to deal with. And then I told him, I said, "Well, jeez, that sounds like handyman work. Why can't I get my town hall paper?"
So you did, okay, so you did, yeah.
So, well, so which conversation? Did it happen the two months prior or on August fourth?
Prior to that.
So the two months prior, when you, okay, so when I, when I ask you, just for clarity, when I ask you to walk us through what happened in the conversation, I need you to make sure that you put everything in there. You know, because a minute ago you walked us through the conversation, two months ago...
He was walking away, and I said, "To be honest, that sounds like, uh, construction work, and I should be doing my handyman pay for that."
Right, but a minute ago when you told the story, you didn't mention the twenty-two hundred, so... Is there anything else you wanna add to the two?
No one asked me if he gave me, told, 'cause you said that he...
No, but my question is, when I'm asking you to walk us through every part of the conversation that you can remember. From, so you were saying two months ago, if you wanted to go over one more time?
Oh, he just told, I asked him what they wanted, and he said twenty-two hundred dollars, that's crazy. And he said, "So I was thinking I could have you do it without a wood."
Okay.
But when driving a ten thousand pound, eighty-five hundred pound vehicle, this ramp with a bale of cobalt wood that weighs close to twelve hundred pounds, I'd like that somebody designed it.
Right, and, and we'll, we'll get into that, I mean, the, the, the point of, right now, the board is trying to take in all the information, that's why both sides are given the opportunity to, to explain everything. So we'll say for the sake of conversation, it was June first, we're saying two months. When I asked you to walk us through everything that happened on June first, from start to finish, you didn't mention the money or the, or the, you know what I mean? So I just wanted to make sure you're not leaving anything out.
Well, he keeps, he'll come back, you know, when I say, "I think I'll do it on a day," then he'll come back and say...
All over the same day?
Yeah, but it's different visits over to me, you know?
So are there, is there anything else from that June visit that you wanna add?
You know, that's where they ended it.
Okay, so, Ed, we'll go back to you. So now we have the added information that back in June or July-ish, twenty-two hundred dollars was brought up.
Yep, that was the price thing for metal, but...
Right.
So you basically, you wanted to build it on your handyman pay as opposed to your transfer station pay?
I was willing to do it on my transfer station pay originally, when I said I would come in on a day off. But when he said no, that wasn't acceptable, then I'm like, "Well, it sounds like construction work, but I should get my handyman pay for that."
So when did you say to him, "It sounds like construction work," because you just explained two of the things?
That was on Saturday, I told him, yeah, I told him.
First question, Bob, to you, this twenty-two hundred dollar quote, is that accurate amount? Is that number accurate than the, the Langley family, that's what it was?
Yeah, it's pretty close to that, I can't remember the exact number, yeah.
Just trying to determine accuracy.
That's real close, yeah.
All right, so anything else on the fourth, so...
So, so, okay, just sort of make sure I'm on the same page here. On that day, you were asked, this is on the fourth, correct?
Second time. The second time, correct?
Second time.
According to him, because according to the supervisor, it only, the conversation has only happened once come August fourth. He's saying that they had a conversation two months prior.
Catch me up here, are we talking the Saturday I showed up?
No, we're not, we're not...
And we're talking the one before, the same before. So, when he asked you to build the ramp, you were willing to do it on a day...
That we're not open to the public.
But you just said that you didn't wanna do it 'cause you wanted design?
Well, I offered to do it first, and they shot me down on that. If we wouldn't went into it further, if we would've said, "Come in on a day off," then I would've said, "Where are we getting that design from, you know? What are we going by?"
But did you ask him about the design?
We didn't even get to that.
Okay, but you're, but you're saying that that was a part of the conversation, you never mentioned having a design?
No, no, we didn't have to, 'cause I, I would've asked for that.
Okay, you, you, okay, but at the time, you didn't mention that?
No, we didn't get that part.
But you did mention the twenty dollars, the handyman pay.
Yeah.
Where did that, where did that come into effect? Why, why did you think the handyman pay was, uh, relevant in the...
For this discussion?
Building a ramp, what, no, I, I'm not gonna do it. The handyman rate is not anything to do with the transfer station, correct?
Correct, and constructing a ramp to drive a skid stair over is not part of my duties as a transfer station either.
Where in your job description does it say that?
Where does it say I have to?
Okay, I believe when we, when you were hired, I believe you were doing the duties at the transfer station.
I was in a recycling building.
Okay, who was your supervisor?
Bob was.
Okay, who, who, who do you take orders from?
Right now, I'm Bob and Roger.
Why do you take orders from Roger?
Because I, oh, I told Bob, he was my supervisor, and he told me I am not your supervisor, I'm superintendent. And when he moved me outdoors in the winter, he told me Roger was my supervisor outside.
All right, let's stop there for a second. Did that conversation happen?
I never told anybody that I was their superintendent, not their supervisor. Roger is not superintendent, Roger is a attendant. And I would never tell anybody that he is, that he's supervisor. He's not a supervisor of anybody.
So, get back to where I was going, so, your supervisor asked you to do a project. You said no.
No, I said I would on the day that we were not open to the public.
But your supervisor, but pretty much you said you weren't gonna do it unless it was on your terms?
No, I just said, I said...
You just said you would do it on a day that you felt was better?
When we're not open to the public, yeah.
So, you were asked to do with that, do something, and you decided that you were gonna make the terms up for this, correct?
Well, he didn't set a time when he was thinking about building it. He, he just threw that out at me, and I said, "Fine, Bob, I'd be happy to do that."
And you were asked to do it, though, you've said what?
Fine, I will come in on the day we're not open to business, I'd be happy to help you build the ramp.
You didn't say no.
No, not until the Wednesday, well, the Wednesday that he came, the fourth.
All right, so, we're gonna slide on here a second, and I guess I'm kinda glad that it's, that it's being recorded, because I'm, I'm missing a couple pieces. So the June-July conversation, you indicate that he gave you a price. You guys didn't talk about handyman, I mean, you, you didn't talk about handyman?
Not until later that day when he came up and gave me...
Okay, well, so, I mean, we're gonna go back to that day one more time. I'm gonna ask you just from the start to finish, everything that happened on that day, because every time we, we go back to this June or July, we're getting more information added. And it's, it's gotta be, you better make sure that the board has all the information. The first time you said that, that he came, he told you what the price was, and there was no discussion about the handyman, there was a...
No, there wasn't until later on that day.
Okay, so walk us through what happened later on in the day.
He came to me, I told him I would do it on the day we weren't open.
So why did he, when he, you told him no once, so he came back to you and just brought it up again?
Yes.
Okay, what did he say to you?
He wanted me, he wanted to know why I wanted to come in on a day, and he said that we had to do it when we were open for business. I don't understand.
Okay, so what did you say to him at that point?
I told him I would come in and help him on a day we weren't there, and then he walked away saying something, and I said, "That sounds like construction, Bob, I should maybe get my town hall paper doing that."
Okay, so that happened later in the day?
Yes.
So, back to you, Bob, you confronted, you guys had a conversation about the ramp. You, in conversation, told him what the Langley company was going to charge, but you say that you never asked him to do it?
There was never anything said about him building the ramp on a day that we weren't there. There was nothing ever said at that time about, uh, getting any kind of pay, whether it be town hall rate, whether it be transfer station rate, or what kind of rate. There was nothing ever said about that. The only time that there was ever a labor rate, uh, mentioned was on the Saturday, which is the seventh...
Which we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna get to.
Of this month, as far as the labor rate was ever discussed.
So, this conversation that was had, did you go back to him sometime later on that same day in June or July and bring the conversation up again?
No, no.
You never spoke to him again later in the day?
No.
No, it was one and done as far as you, you recall? Okay, all right, so clear on the June-July, August fourth, you indicated that, that you told me to come in on another day. Your stance is clear that he said it wasn't construction work and, and he, he just wasn't doing it.
He said it was, it just is a trip, yeah.
So that brings us to Saturday, August eleventh, uh, seventh, I'm sorry, August seventh. Bob, walk us through what happened that day.
Go ahead and beat it off, you got it, I didn't give it off.
No, you didn't give me one from the seventh.
No. Okay, I'm seven. Uh, I told you, Jeff Mallory, on, uh, August seventh, at seven fifty-five, uh, the conversation went as follows. And I said, "The other day, uh, on August fourth, I mentioned that I had a project for you, and you declined, so I assumed that the answer was the same. And at that point, uh, I asked why. Jeff's response was, uh, "That's not my job description, and I also shouldn't have to perform construction work at transfer pay."
That's it? So what did you do at that point, when after he said that?
Uh, after, after that, I stopped the conversation, and, uh, I went back over to him, he was over by the demo bin, I went back over to him, and I just said to him, "Jeff, you know what? I said, "This, this can't continue like this." And then he sat on a little bit of a rant, I said, "No, I'm gonna stop right here, 'cause there wasn't any point in my getting up." You know, you know, probably facility wasn't gonna stop, you know? Kind of in-depth conversation.
When you say a little bit of a rant, can you be more specific?
Well, yeah, well, he started to say, "Well, this and that and the other," and I threw some of his tools away, and I don't know where that came from, because I've never thrown any of his personal tools away. Um, and that's what I, that's what I, when he started on saying stuff like that, I says, "I'm not gonna continue this conversation at this point in time." And that's when I figured, "Well, I need some, my liaison to come and, and get in this conversation." That's when I called David.
Okay, so let's stop there for a second. So walk us through, from, from your point, what happened on the seventh, when he approached you about this ramp again?
Well, Roger and I were on the hopper, we were on the, the deck for the hopper. It was before we stopped work. He came over, and he said, "I asked you to do a project for me, and you told me no, but I didn't ask you why." I said the same reasons as the last time, Bob. And then he said, "So you're refusing work," and I said, "Call it what you want, Bob, but that I get it, the reasons are the same as the last time." So then he walked away, and then when I was doing my job over at the demo bin, he came over and said, "So you're refusing work," and I said, "Bob..."
He followed you over there?
No, he came out over, when he saw me over there alone.
Okay, go ahead.
And then, it was after eight, so I went to work, started crushing up furniture and stuff, throwing the can, and he came over and said, "So you're refusing work," and I said, "Call it what you want, Bob." And then he said something, and I said, "You know what, Bob, I told you when you threw all my tools away, you're not asking me to do any more projects yet." And he was walking away, he walked away, and then Mr. Winchell shut up.
So I'm gonna give you a chance to, to rebut that. Did you have, this is where, you know, just the difference in, in stories. I mean, you indicate that you guys had the one conversation in the hopper, you went your separate ways. He's saying that you came back out after him, when he approached him, when he was alone?
Yeah, I just said that, yeah.
Oh, you did, okay, I missed that, okay, good, that makes me feel a little better, okay. So you went over and re-approached him, okay. So you called David, and what do you say, well, let's, let's chime David in. David, what does he say to you on the phone?
Uh, he said, pretty much what you just said, that he, uh, asked him, both the same thing. And, um, pretty much, the way I took it is he refused. And, um, at that point, I, uh, came up. I can't tell you exactly what time it was when I got there, but it was, um...
It was before then, you left that?
Yeah, because, um, I remember the conversation, and, uh, three or four hours left, and I explained to him what I wanted him to do, but, um, I brought both of the, uh, the supervisor and the attendant down to the, uh, dumpster down below, so we were away from the public, and, uh, asked for the votes holdout, and, um, Bob explained that he asked him to do this project, and, um, and, uh, Mr. Mallory explained to me that, um, he didn't wanna do it, and he named about four or five different reasons why he didn't wanna do it.
What were the reasons that you were found?
Uh, went from, I think the first reason was safety, that was the first one. The second one was, um, that he wanted to do it on his own time. There was the rate of pay that came up, um, that he bought through all his tools so he could do it, and it was construction work, and it wasn't in his, um, job description. And, so, when each one of these would come up, um, you know, I, I did ask, "What do you mean, safety?" And I, I had really no answer to that, there was nothing discussed about an eight thousand pound rig driving up or nothing like that. Um, the, uh, rate of pay, uh, we did have a discussion about that, and I did ask him why he thought that, because he got a certain salary at the town hall, where, why it carried over to the, uh, transfer station, which it doesn't. Um, I did explain to him that when your supervisor, when we talked about the job description, there is no job description, and I know we could not find a job description. As far as we knew, when you were hired, the individual was hired, I explained this to him, that his job was to do what his supervisor told him to do. Um, the, the whole, uh, when we got in the discussion about the, um, the Langley boys and the, and the ramp, um, honestly, I, I could not, and I explained my displeasure, why the attendant was even talking about that, 'cause it really wasn't any of his deal. His job is to do what the supervisor asked him to do. And, so we went through all these scenarios, and this and that, and, um, then we got on the subject of the tools getting thrown away, and, and Bob chimed in on it, saying, you know, um, that, um, I did not throw you tools away, and, uh, Mr. Mallory said, "I thought you were a man." And then we stopped that, I settled that.
Say that again?
Yeah.
Who said that?
Mr. Mallory said that, "Mr. Man." And that's when I shut him down, because I didn't wanna get it out of hand. And, um, at that point, I explained to the employee at that point that he was, um, in my eyes, that he was not doing as he was told. 'Cause every reason that he had given me was something that contradicted another one. First, it was safety, then I would do it, but I won't do it unless I get this. He was dictating the job, and I did not believe that was the, uh, the job of the attendant, that it was the supervisor's job to be, um, dictating what the attendant does. So I explained to him at that point that, uh, we will be having a meeting on this, um, that, um, I, we had three or four hours, I think it was four hours, left of the day, that I wanted the two individuals to go one way, and the one go the other way, and I didn't want them to speak to each other and do their jobs, as they typically do. And we ended the conversation as that.
Jeff, did you ever report to anyone that your tools were thrown away?
I asked him about it a few times, but...
What, what makes you believe he threw them away?
Well, 'cause when they, inside the building, you have trash cans. I brought my tools in to fix a door on one of the trailers. I left them in there, and I told them they were in there.
So, hold on, one sec, so you fixed the door on the trailer?
Yes.
What time, when did you do that?
That was probably a few weeks, probably, uh, to the memory of the first, the first...
The first, okay, so what did you have to do to the trailer?
Um, they had a piece of diamond plate on the floor, and it was loose, and when you turned with a skid stair, it kicked the diamond plate out and ripped the framing on the door out.
You zipped it back in place, so?
I zipped it back in, but we invited it in longer, I had to put it back together with what was there.
So you fixed the trailer door, okay, go ahead. So your tools were left there inside?
Yes, and, um, over there Rogers compacters, we rolled the fence back so they can dump their trash cans. Well, they go there, dumps the trash can, and my tools go out into the hopper, and I'm like, "David, what are my tools doing there?"
Yeah, so employee, let's try not to, I know he's a former, but let's say employee, another employee.
Yeah, and then he says, "Oh, you know, ask Bob." That was it.
The employee told, the employee told you to ask Bob?
Yeah.
So the employee was insinuating that Bob did it?
Yeah.
So, did you...
Did you go after?
I did, I did go ask Bob.
And what did he say?
He said, "That's how I roll in here."
Okay, Bob, so let's stop there for a second. Bob, walk us through, um, he's fixing the trailer, so you can, do you confirm that he fixed the door on the trailer?
Which, uh, well, the, the door on the trailer and the steel on the floor are two different things, and he just said that he was gonna fix the steel on the floor, so, I, you know what? I don't know what tool he's talking about that was there, I know that he did have a tool, and I don't, I don't even know what the proper name of this tool is, it's a, got a wheel on it, and it cuts metal. Um, he had that there, I know, and I had used it a couple times, and, um, I went and bought one, so the transfer station has it at home now. And I, I don't believe I ever threw that tool away.
Is that a tool that...
No, that tool I brought in when, um, the skid stair got broken. David came and welded it for us, the handle on the bucket, to release the bucket. That was back when I was in the recycling building.
So what tool, what tool is?
Yeah, we fixed, I actually fixed two of those, one on the cat door trailer, and then one on the cobalt wood, so you, so you do construction work.
And that was during regular business hours?
It was.
So walk us through what tools specifically?
It's, uh, it was a port table, eighteen-holton pack driver, and a cordless, uh, skill saw.
Okay, so that, your skill saw. All right, so you went to him, he indicated that was how he rolls. You don't remember this conversation at all?
I, I don't even know, where, where were these tools when I threw them away?
I had left them waiting to disassemble stuff, and then they, they got put over where you guys put the wine in the boxes on that little table, they were back there.
But it...
So if they were over there, how did they get over to hopper when David would leave and over camp?
But it, former employee.
Yeah, former employee, I'm sorry.
Oh, so this is, this is quite a while ago?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, I know, I know.
I didn't bring it up, I let it go, but you guys are asking a question.
It's coming, it's coming up.
You brought it up last Saturday.
Right, 'cause you asked me the reasons, and I told you, I gave you five reasons, I said, and I told him then, when you threw, when I questioned him about throwing them away, he said, "That's how I roll." And I said, "Don't ever ask me to do another construction project."
You accused him on that Saturday of throwing them away, he said, "I did not do that." And then you said...
So that happened a year ago.
All right, so, and, did you make the comment that Mr. Winchell is referring to? So, he, so Bob says that he did not throw them away, and David, what was Jeff's response?
I thought you said you were a man.
Right, 'cause he's always telling us, "I'm Bob Mann, a real man with two N's." So I said, "Be, you say you're a man, be a man, and only what you did for once."
You said that, to your supervisor?
Yes.
Okay.
In front of David.
Yes, there's a, um, there's a quote over there. Does anybody else need a glass of water?
Please, I can do the water.
Yeah, let's, let's do a whole round, yeah.
All right.
Okay, let's just skip for a second. Can you carry? I'm just thinking that, your skills are...
I had three, let's do three.
Man?
We should drag the whole water somewhere, it'd get rid of it.
Bob, is there a water you have, something?
I have most of it, thanks.
Jeff, not if he doesn't back up. You said you didn't want more, right? All right, so, I just wanna make sure that, that the board has left and heard this quick, carefully, and, and... So, on August seventh, you listed out your reasons for, for not doing, the reasons you believed you shouldn't do the ramp?
He asked me what I said to Bob, and I said, I told him same reasons as before. He asked what the reasons were I listed off. He said, "How many were there?" I said, "Three or four," and there was four.
Okay, so you listed them off, we know what those reasons are. The, but one of them primarily, that's when you brought, you then notified the time it happened, and the board has left, and that your supervisor threw your tools away, and you believe that to be true because he indicated that's how he rolls?
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask you one more time, but walk me through what you, what you said next to your supervisor. 'Cause I, I feel like I miss, I, I don't think I put that right, yes.
He's always telling us that he's a real man with two N's, and his name. And I told him, right, and I said, "Bob, you always tell us you're a real man, well, be a man and only, you know you threw my tools away."
Is that what he said to you, or was it just the statement?
He just said, "Be a, be a real man."
That was it? Nothing about the last name, we're trying to tie them together, okay.
No, but I heard, I didn't hear that.
I was at that point, I just wanted to de-escalate, and get people back to work like they should've been in the first place. And, uh, that's what I did.
All right, so let's walk through Ed and Kim's questions from the seventh, for the three of them that were present. Go ahead, Ed.
The only real question I have pertains to the tools, if I can...
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was one of the defenses, is why you didn't do the job, because there was certain other discussion.
Did you, did you retrieve the tools from the hopper?
No, we're not allowed to go in the hopper. I'm not allowed to climb into the dumpsters.
You didn't get them, you didn't reach in with a bolt or anything? You just decided that?
They were going down and in.
They weren't worth retrieving?
See them?
Yeah, I saw them, I opened the gate for them to dump.
Oh, that's new too.
The tools doing it there, and he's like, "Ask Bob."
Okay.
May I say something?
Yes.
The tools, people drop off tools all the time. They drop them all over by outside the big door over there by the recycling building. And if somebody drops tools off on the bench, they're usually no good. I cut the cords off them and throw the tools in the metal bin. I don't throw them in the hopper across the street. And the way Jeff's talking right now, that they were in the hopper across the street, well, how to help, excuse my language, how the heck did they get over to the hopper? Because the metal tools don't go in the hopper across the street. Any metal goes in the metal bin or goes in the bucket outside and I guess they kept them, they got them dumped in there, so. There, that's my understanding. And if I had, if somebody's tools were laying around, let's say they were out there on that bench over where I was taking stuff, but we just said that's where they were and I threw them out. I didn't know they were his tools. And I would not throw somebody's tools away on purpose. And I never said, "That's how I roll," because I don't roll like that. I just, I don't understand. And if somebody had thrown my tools away, I'd have sent somebody, but, well, somebody buy me some new tools.
They're cordless tools. We take the batteries out of them, then batteries get put in the bucket to be recycled and then throws the rest of the tool, because it's made out of plastic, and he wheels them over and dumps them in Rogers compacters.
I don't throw.
That's what we do with the plastic tools.
Tools have, tools have, tools have like that, have electric motors in them. I don't throw them in the regular trash.
Ed, did you have another question about the tools?
No, I'm just, I'm just curious why you didn't get something to, I mean, there's all kinds of poles and rakes and grabby things there, why didn't you try to?
No, we don't have all kinds of poles. We have things to poke stuff down, but we really don't have anything to pick up a little in there. You can try, you're welcome to come and try, I don't say, you know, we don't. I have a telescopic.
Sounds like there's some sort of miscommunication. It's always one goes in the hopper, what doesn't. I mean, you know, you're saying, you do it one way, you're saying it's another way. I'm just, you know what I mean, I don't.
Yeah, they shouldn't, I mean, whether we agree on the tools or not, or what happened to the tools, the fact that the supervisor and the employee aren't even on the same page as you.
Same page as you.
How to take care of those of them.
Yeah, and, but if it was my tools that I found inside the hopper that.
We shut the park.
Who knows how they got there? I'd be doing the lockout hangout thing and retrieving those tools out.
Not on a Saturday when the line's up to gate, you wouldn't.
I would, they're my tools, they're.
You guys again.
They were three or four hundred bucks. I mean, I'd be figuring away, but anyway, so, yeah, but no, there is something, this.
This quarter, or miscommunication, there's some issues.
So, Kim, do you have any questions about what happened on the Saturdays? Supervisor indicates that he spoke to him again, he refused to do it again. He calls his liaison, liaison comes up, employee gives him four or five reasons why he didn't do it. Would you just kind of walk through those, what those were? Any questions?
I don't really, I'm glad, also everybody's up.
David, what happened from there?
Well, I explained to him to do their duties, that they typically do, stay away from each other. And I did tell him that we remain on the Wednesday, I didn't realize.
Didn't give notice?
We had to give a Sunday notice, because I thought this was kind of a big deal. One thing that I got out of it was, I asked, "Who was your supervisor?" And at one point, it's Roger.
Said the other attendant was?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And then I explained to him that Bob is the supervisor. To me, the conversation and the responses I was getting out of it was that he wanted to dictate what he did and when he did it. And I explained to the employee that that's not how things roll around here, that your supervisor dictates what you do.
This is a conversation you had directly with him?
Yes.
Was Mr. Man still there?
Yes, he was. And I made sure that everything I said was within both. I did show my displeasure because it was a Saturday and I thought this was a little ridiculous that we're having a fight over not working when you're supposed to be working. And I do believe you remember that. So, you don't believe this job is part of your job description?
No, I do not.
But you just told us that you fixed the doors of the floor in the other building.
During the winter when it was slow, yes.
But where do you think as an employee, you made that decision?
When I'm gonna be driving an eight thousand pound skid steer up a ramp, how you think I should have some say in how the ramp gets built? He has very.
Did you go to your supervisor and say, "I'm not doing that because I believe it's unsafe"?
No, I had no idea what his design was until he built it.
Okay, but you did not ask him for a design?
No.
So, how was he supposed to know that you had all these problems? You just decided you didn't feel like doing the project?
I decided I would do it on a day we weren't open.
Where do you believe that being an attendant, you override a supervisor?
Well, if I'm doing that kind of job, it's not in my job description.
You, where in your job description does it say you do not do carpentry? When you just said, "You did fix this, fix that." But now because he threw away your tools, now you've decided that.
One of the reasons, yes.
So, what I'm getting here is, you seem to be deciding when you feel like doing a project and when you don't.
If you disrespect me and my tools, then I won't have any more.
So, now you're telling me you're not doing the project because you've been disrespecting your tools supposedly, throw away. Not because of the safety reason, not because it wasn't a design. What is the reason why you decided not to do?
There are four reasons why, and I just gave you.
And then plus, plus the pay. Where did the pay come in at all?
Because he was giving me such a high title, Bob, that finally I said, "You know what, Bob, this sounds like a handy, we wouldn't get anywhere, this sounds like a handyman job."
If you have a second job, you're a seven eleven, and you're a cashier, okay? You make thirty dollars an hour, which I don't, they make, okay, I'm just using an example. And you're up there, and you're making your wage up there, and you say, "You know what, I shouldn't get the same as the downer." Do you get that? No, okay? There's nothing in your job description that says you don't do that or you do it, okay? When we hired you, your job was to do the transfer station jobs. He pulls you from one spot to another spot to another spot, correct? Who makes those decisions?
No, actually.
Who makes those decisions on what job you do? Who makes that decision? You was supervisor.
It changed since the day I got started.
Wait, wait a minute. Who, who's your boss? Who's your boss?
You guys don't like the boss.
No. At the transfer station, who is your boss?
He's the superintendent at the transfer station.
He is your supervisor.
They're both the boss.
He puts you in a direction of where you need to go, correct?
He should, in a safe manner, yes.
Okay, but did you ever say there was a safety issue?
No, we didn't get to that.
Okay, no, because it's come up, it came up after this all went down?
Well, after I seen what he wanted to build, yes, he did.
Oh, you saw it, there was a.
Bob told me, he was coming in on a Tuesday to build it.
But my question is this, when he asked you to build that, did you say, "Bob, is a safety issue?" There, all right.
When, when he had a conversation before he went to see about getting it done in steel, he wanted to build it out of.
But the steel doesn't matter, that's irrelevant, at this point. Because honestly, you shouldn't even have been part of that conversation, because you're an attendant, okay? The information that you got.
Should not have been given.
Shouldn't even have been given to you for the simple fact is you're an attendant, you're not the supervisor, okay? So, whether or not he had, want to have Langley build it or not, is irrelevant at this point. At the, the point that's relevant here is the idea that he asked you to do a project and you said, "No."
What's relevant is the old ramp field, that's why he asked my suggestion and I said, "Maybe you should look into having it built out of steel," because that design didn't work.
Okay, but when he told you to build a new one, did you say, "That's not gonna work"?
It's.
Did you tell him that was not gonna work?
I told him I would do it on a day we weren't open.
Okay, so now it's safe enough to do it on a day off, correct?
See what he wants to build, I told him.
So, you didn't even know what he was building?
Nope, he just said he wanted my help building a ramp and I told him.
So, he wanted you to help him do it, so you weren't even doing it by yourself?
Well, he can't be in there alone.
Okay, so, I just don't get this. You're saying, "The safety, this and that," you didn't even know what you were building, okay? You said that your tools got stolen, you've been disrespected, that you want to get paid a certain rate, that you have absolutely no authority to get paid because that has nothing to do with the transfer station. That is a complete different paycheck, that's why you sent, sent in a different time card for that, okay? So, why that was, that was irrelevant, that should never have been brought up. So, you were asking for a hiking pay to do a job that was part of your job?
It's not part of my job. If I wanted, I've done construction work.
But what you, what you told him you said was, you already said that you did construction work up there, then you turn around and say, "He didn't."
I did some repairs for him when things got broken. After he threw my tools away, I told him, "Don't ask me for any more construction projects." And I still offered to go in and help him after he did that.
But where, as an employee, do you have the right to tell the supervisor, "You're not doing a job"?
Well, because you're paying me sixteen dollars an hour and I've been in construction my whole life, and if I'm gonna do construction work, I get a lot more than sixteen dollars an hour. And if I'm not, then there's no point in me being at the transfer station doing construction work.
But you weren't being subbed out as a, doing the structure, he was gonna help you do it, it was a joint adventure from what you're.
He was gonna be there on a day we not open to the public, because two people have to be there. It's not safe to work with one person in the transfer station rolling tools and equipment.
But you didn't say that when we were up there.
He didn't give me much kiss, did you? Came in and you, three times you said to me, "First thing out of your mouth was, 'It's Saturday and I should be on my motorcycle and I'm not happy I'm here.'" Those were first three things you said to me.
Very, and you're right, I did, no, I did say, "Ask how you guys are doing first," Jeff.
You might, Bob came up and done it.
I did ask how you guys are doing it and leave on my truck. I did not bar code it that year, like, I did.
But I didn't call you and ask you to come up there. That took place prior.
Yeah.
And then Wednesday, he asked me for the reasons, and then he waited till Saturday to ask me again, and then he called you. I didn't call you to come up there. If you would have asked, you know, he could have called you on Wednesday when he asked me, I don't know why he waited till Saturday.
So, you believe, because you make sixteen dollars an hour, and you seem to think this is the job description that we can't find, that you can dictate what you get paid to do certain duties in that yard?
If it doesn't relate to the transfer station duties, yes, but.
Do we have a set, do we have a set job description for this position?
Well, originally I was hired as a.
I'm, I'm, no, I'm asking, he does not have a job description, no, he does not have one.
So, you can't tell really what you think your job is, nor can we, I'm sorry, but there should be something, whether it says that your job description is what the supervisor tells you what to do, I'm just saying.
I mean, if he tells me to dump thirty gallons of oil on this, say we blow holes and thirty gallons of oil fall on the road, and he tells me to bury it, am I supposed to do it?
No, I know, that's, he was not asking you to do something legal, that's completely different.
No, but he's saying in.
Okay, and that really, if that's oil spilled on the road, he buries it, your job would be to make a phone call to Tower Hall to your liaison and say, "He just did something legal."
Yeah.
Because that's your job.
Every time that Mr. Wendell indicates that you do it at your supervisor request, it's always within reason, it's within the scope of it. He's not insinuating in any way that if you come across something illegal or wrong, you're absolutely not expected. When, when, there are no job descriptions and you're, and they make statements, you know, you're expected to do things there, it's always within reason, within a reasonable request, but that, your example would not be. I think the piece that David is struggling with is that construction seems to be that was one of the big pieces that I heard as far as why you didn't, why you didn't want to do it or wouldn't do it, because these other reasons are, or some of them are new to me and I've spoken to both of you, is because now that you said you fixed the trailer door, that feels like construction. So, that's what he's tying together.
Yeah, it's not really, I mean, just screwed the boards back on and hung the door again.
So, it was a minor.
It was a minor repair is what it was.
So, let's move on from this briefly to go to the other concern and that was brought up. And I think that it's resolved because we had a conversation, but in regards to currently knowing what's expected of you in your location, because this came up, the superintendent did mention to me when I was there that he had concerns that he was staying at the hopper, if you will. So, there has to be clear direction as far as the other employee, you know, is there at the hopper to help and assist and point people to go in the other direction and then the idea was that Jeff bounces from here, there and everywhere, or grounds, so you shouldn't be hanging out at the hopper, if you will. I'm just looking at that. So, that, because as Mr. Man told me directly, that there were things that he could be doing and often he would look over and you would just be, be there. I mean, if, you know, Bob was sweeping the parking lot or breaking down furniture, that you don't need to be meeting and assisting every person that comes in, that's what they have the other employee, you have to do to kind of point them in the right direction. Is that accurate? And it was a concern that there was a lot of time being spent there at the hopper rather than finding other things that you could be doing. What is your response to that?
My responses, I'm responsible for a lot of areas. The compactors centrally located in the transfer station. From there, I can see the leaves, I can see the cement block, and I can see the brush. I can look through the window and see both the low cans and I can see the steel under refrigerators. The only thing I really can't see is the TVs and the oil because people pop all over the place and you just can't see it on the vehicles. And when they come in, I walk up to their truck, I look at what they have and then I assist them with what I have. And if I have to go and assist somebody, I say, "Roger, I'll be back, I'm gonna go help this guy, I'm over there."
What is, so while you're assisting, what is the other, I'll ask Bob, is while he's assisting in doing those things, what is the other employee then doing? If he's meeting and greeting every car that comes up and assisting them with what's in the water, which is what I witnessed when I came up there, that he essentially was handling every car that came through, honestly. What is the other employee, the other employee doing? What is the other employee, what's the difference between here? What is the other employee supposed to be doing?
Can I say a name or?
No, the other.
Other employee besides Jeff, the other employee besides Jeff, he's the one who watched what goes in the hopper. Tell people that they throw the wrong thing in the hopper, he should walk up to their vehicle, see what they have in that vehicle and say, "No, you can't put that in there, that goes to demo or whatever."
So, so he is meeting, so he's meeting and greeting every car that comes in and pointing them accordingly?
Right.
So, should they both be there doing that? I guess it's not also the difference.
So, let me, let me explain it a little bit. Yes, Jeff can be over there. Peter used to be over there quite a bit of the time, but not all the time. Peter knew what he had to do with the yard and he did. So, he has him be over there, he does see what's going on. And if a guy happens to come in and he got demo, yeah, so Jeff can point him to the demo can, and I say, "Yeah, you clock it down and you put it in this can over here." My problem with that is, and the only reason I brought that up was, and it didn't used to be a problem, it got to be a problem within the last couple of months or so, that there would be metal up to the metal bin, which should be in the metal bin. There would be furniture room by the furniture thing, which should be in the furniture store and put in the furniture. So, I would spend nights after work or back after work and put the metal in the metal bin and stuff. I figured that I shouldn't have to do that.
So, why not tell the employee to do what that's supposed to be covering it?
Well, because this is about the time all this stuff started, and you know what, when when somebody's beating you up, you're kind of like, "We can't, we can't discuss that."
Well, right, he's not gonna be on.
No, I'm not, but you know, like, so, 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 I figured, you know what? It's easier. It's a do it myself and get it out, out of the way.
So three months ago, he, as those piles grew around these stations, as we call them around, he automatically, I'll give you a chance to respond. He automatically would, you wouldn't see those piles up in the furniture or the metal?
No, it used to be...
Three months ago, you wouldn't see that at all.
He used to be really good about it. You know, and I, I told Jeff before, in, in, I must say, six, eight months ago. Jeff, you know, I liked your work ethic. You're always, always busy. You know, anyway, now I got some chips out of the chip pile, and when they left some chips down there, so they could use the little chips, and put it in there, walk away, going up the open and stuff. He was always keeping busy and stuff like that. So, but things, things have changed, so, that's why I brought that up.
All right. So go back about two months and figure, give us an idea of why these things, why it's changed.
When I got moved to the outside, it was in October, the winter. Nobody took me, nobody took me out and showed me what to do. I've been doing my job, they say...
They showed you the outside and figure it out?
What I do is, we leave at four o'clock. We're supposed to be open till four. We're ready to go home at four. So if furniture comes in, just the other day, it was four o'clock, people were dropping chairs off. I come in in the morning at seven thirty, I bust up all furniture, put it in there while nobody's in the transfer station, and I go up through stale, and I do the same with the stale. And I've been doing that since I started outdoors.
So you're saying you haven't changed?
I haven't changed anything. Nobody's come up to me and said, "We'd like you to do it differently." Because I would've told them, first of all, in the, the Tamaano report, it says furniture's supposed to be broken down before it even comes in. There's no reason we're taking bureaus and mattresses, and we have to take them out.
But in all honesty, if you, if you're in the hopper guiding them, why don't you tell them the customer's out and make them go break it down?
Go break, because, uh, they go in and ask Bob, and he tells them it's okay to leave.
Nobody ever asks me that, I know. I tell you what, furniture, we have taken furniture in like that since I've been ten years. And you know what? To ask people to take furniture or time, some of them go about putting it in. It's a courtesy to them. How long does it take us to take this skid steer and put the bucket on and smash it down and throw it in the can? So it's a, it's a courtesy, you know what? Why, why are we gonna beat, beat the customer up over that?
And you can't do it while you're open, because people just come in, and they, they don't stay in the line and run up to Roger's hopper. If they go in the demo, they go around, and they'll pop right behind you. Here, here there was a Northern JD's truck, and they pulled right in behind me while I was trying to pull a pallet off. So you got, it's just not a safe environment to be doing it when you're open. That's why I was coming in early and doing it all. And sometimes we don't get a stale can for a couple of days, so then the stale piles up on the ground. And where does it get piled? In front of the can. So now when the new can comes in, people can't get to that stale can to put their stale in, so they just keep throwing it unfiled. So if I'm coming in in the morning, break it up, get it all crushed down, put it in the stale can, so we're ready to open whatever time we're supposed to open. So Roger meets me there a half hour, another attendant meets me there a half hour early. So there's two people on site, and he watches while I do my thing. And when I get done with that, I go in and get Bob's building ready, so people can come in.
And you've done the same?
And I've been doing the same thing since October.
So even, um, so today is Thursday, so Wednesday, did you go in and get the supervisor to get the recycling building ready? Yesterday? Is that true?
Yeah, it's open, yeah, it's open.
I emptied, I emptied everything too, but Bob and the other attendant, they come in, they're the last ones to come in. The gates are already open a half hour before we open for business. Like if it says eight o'clock, the gates are open at seven thirty.
And those, and there are certainly some minor administrative things that we've learned, I think that we need to address here anyway.
So there are people that come in and throw recycling in building while nobody's there in that building.
Right, but if you open at eight, like I said, that's administrative, and the board will take notes and deal with differently. I'm not sure why, why that happens if the staff's not there, but nonetheless, um, as far as the, to the selectmen, as far as the location of the employee kind of moving around, you've heard the supervisor say that, um, he feels like the last two months, things have changed, and he's stopped doing those things, and the concern from the supervisor was that he doesn't mind if he's at the hopper area as long as all of his other things are, are done. But you hear the employee telling you that he hasn't changed?
I would be happy to stay after.
That he, the employee hasn't changed everything he's done in the last, since he started in October.
On the side.
Go ahead, while he's finished the last sentence. He'd be happy to...
I'd be happy to stay after and break the furniture.
But nobody's asked you to?
Nobody's asked me to, and, um, he's a salary employee, so if he wants to stay after, and he never asked me, he stays after. And when Roger, another attendant, asked him why he was staying after, he said, "Over time. Just collect overtime."
I don't collect overtime.
Right, salary.
Right, because you sell.
All right, so...
Can I say something else?
Stop.
Furniture that gets broken out, it can be done during the day. And I say that because that's what we've done for ten years, or nine years, because he's been there every year. So we did for nine years, we busted up the furniture, well, on a time. And the second thing is to, to leave it and stay after and do it after, or come in early the next day and do it. That's not in the budget. You know, the budget, the budget is written out for X number of hours for the employees, and it's not ballooned so that you've got extra money in there, so that you can have something to stay with, when it can't be done during the day.
Is it getting, I mean, it is summertime too. Is that one of the issues? Or...
Uh, we get more stuff in summer, but...
You know, I didn't know if that, you know...
But you feel like those things can be done during the day?
Nothing's really changed.
Same, same thing as we've been doing for ten years.
And when it slows down during the day, and there's no, I'll tell Roger, I'll tell the other attendant, "I'm going over to break up furniture." When it's slow, if there's people coming in and out, and they, they pull up right behind you, you can't, you break up furniture, stuff flies. You know, but are we gonna keep doing it that way until somebody gets hurt? And then, then what? Then I'm in the...
Well, in, in the ten years that you said you've broken up the furniture, has anybody ever gotten hurt?
Uh-uh.
The selectmen have any other questions?
So you said that you come in early
Uh-huh.
to bust up stuff, put it in, and get things ready for the day?
Right.
Are you still doing that?
Yes.
But Bob has said that he comes in, or stays late, and busts it up, and you had to put metal into the metal dumpster because it hadn't been done?
Mm-hmm. I agree, I agree how you do that. I agree how you do that, yeah.
I'll bet the metal, man, I leave one grill up there, or a kitchen stove in one area. Then you got your lawn mowers, and then you have refrigerators that conditions. I leave one of everything, so Roger can say to the people, the attendant can say to the people, "There's a grill up there on the hill. Bring that. Bob, do help assist in somebody else." This way, they get a visual, because...
Okay, yeah, it's scandalous.
Some guy came in with a helium tank the other day, you were there. And, uh, when I was walking away, I heard him tell the guy, "Put it up in stale." But you know where I stayed, right? It was right near the front building where the propane tanks go. So they're not, they don't, either they don't understand, or they're just so anxious to get rid of this.
They don't listen.
They just won't put it where they can.
Yeah.
So if I'm not centrally located, I spend my whole day chasing particles and... I mean, we got trash, we're putting suitcases in the goodie ship. Household trash.
All right, I'm gonna get off the track here. So we, have we covered all of the concerns, um, Mr. Mann, that you have, that you brought forward to the board?
I'm good.
And Jeff, do you believe that you've had ample chance to respond to the concerns that were brought in front of you? The board asked all of the questions that they feel like they've wanted to, to bring? Um, so you guys are gonna, you've got a couple of options here. So, um, you're going to deliberate, and you're going to have conversations amongst one another. Once you do the deliberations start, the two employees can no longer be involved. They're allowed to stay and listen, but they cannot, um, they can't be part of it anymore. It's just a board of selectmen deliberation, so you wanna make sure that you've gotten all your questions out. You don't have to do that deliberation tonight. Um, you can certainly think on it, or we can just do it all over here, or just put all the thoughts on the table. Um, you know, even though we're, you're in an open executive session, if you decide to make any decisions, um, you know, regarding reprimand, it'd have to be outside of an executive session. Do you still have a motion to come out? Um, the other piece that I'm gonna encourage is that before we leave tonight, outside of this executive session, um, that we put very clear guidelines until these things, until this is sorted out, on who's gonna be where, doing what, and it, so it couldn't be more clear on what's expected of, of one another, of what supervisor expects of him going forward until you guys are able to sort this out. Because, you know, we need to make sure that the, the jobs are being done. And then everybody, the employee knows what the supervisor expects of him. Um, you know, and the supervisor has to be more vocal in, in telling him to, you know, to do these things during the day, if that's something that's always happened, and, you know, we need to portray that to the employees, that he knows what's expected of him, effective Saturday morning. So do you want to deliberate this evening? Do you want to, any other questions for the two of them? When we deliberate, we're just essentially gonna go through these things, and you guys are gonna talk amongst yourselves as to whether or not you believe who's telling the truth based on what facts, and where you think it should go from here.
I mean, I think we probably oughta, if this tape is done, we'll...
Yeah, yeah.
We'll probably continue.
All right, so I'm gonna pull up the, I just wanna make sure of the personnel policy, which you all have copies of, and I'm just looking at it electronically. All right, so let's go through the, um, the concerns. So the, the first one really, that the biggest part of the conversation, um, is the ramp. I mean, what are the, you know, what did you hear on both sides? Did you find any truths on either side? That, you know, anyone might have fabricated the story to some extent. Who do you believe? What do you do?
I plan to make consistencies.
All right, wanna share them with the board?
Um, he was asked at one point to build the ramp, would help construct the ramp. Um, he said he wanted to build it on his off time.
Was it his off time or, or when customers weren't coming to the...
When customers weren't there, when, you know, when the transfer station...
By the way, for me.
Yep, when the, when the transfer station wasn't open to the public.
Okay.
Um, initially, we didn't hear anything about price or hourly rate. The more the conversation went on, it took a turn to hourly rate, more being, um, you know, construction work. Then we heard a safety concern as far as the design for it. There seemed to be a lot of different reasons come up as to why the employee wouldn't build the ramp. Um, we've been in consistencies. What, what are construction up there? What isn't? Maintenance work has been done in off, in, during business hours, when it's been slow, things that needed to be done, which is something that needed to be done. I'm glad that was... I'm always happy to see someone do little extras like that. And it's not a, I don't see that as being, quote, a handyman thing. It's kind of maintaining the transfer station and, um, doing it because you wanna build it. So, you know, one hand, you didn't wanna build the ramp. I think some of this goes back to the tools. I'm very concerned that the individual didn't wanna retrieve his own expensive tools out of the hopper.
Or, if he didn't get anywhere with the supervisor, should've come to us and, and, you know, because...
That is, we don't want record.
You know, seriously, because that should...
I mean, there are ways of getting the tools out of the hopper.
You know, getting them out, letting us...
If someone put a, dropped a diamond ring in there, we find a way of getting them in there to get a customer's diamond ring out. So...
I, I, the, the tool thing really got me, because I didn't know anything about the tools until I showed up that day.
Yeah, and I didn't know anything about it until, really, today.
Honestly, at the end of the day, if somebody had thrown my tools away, and I knew it was a certain individual, um, I would not be going on without my tools, or at least a brand new set of tools.
Contact.
I, I feel that the tools issue was a convenient excuse at the time, because it was too inconsistent. There was this, 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 and that, and then that. And then that was something that I hadn't even heard of before, so, um, so I don't... If it was a tool issue, shame on you. Should've, should've been a complaint. Don't, don't come back to us a year later and say, "That happened, and we have no idea what happened." Um, the other issues with the, um, when the supervisor tells you to do a job, or asks you to do the job, and you say no, and you give all these reasons why, um, I don't get that. Um, supervisor, you do the job the supervisor tells you to do, if not, um, you, uh, if you feel it's unsafe, then you should, it should've been brought to us. Um, but at the same time, when the individual said it was unsafe, that said he would do it, but then he would, he would do it on his own time, or he would do it at more pay. And the pay issue should not have even been an issue, because that is not as rare a pay. It's a different job, complete job. I feel that the individual seems to be dictating what he does, what he feels like doing. And, um, I don't believe that's a good way to, um... An employee should be doing what his supervisor tells him to do within reason. And when he was asked to do that, uh, he did give examples of other stuff that he'd done handyman stuff before. And this was not an issue that he was gonna be doing it by himself. It sounded as if it was gonna be a joint venture. And it doesn't matter whether or not the employee thinks that, uh, he wouldn't have the time. It's not his decision to make. It's the supervisor's job to make that decision.
Ken? I do agree with, you know, the fact that Bob is the supervisor. And, you know, when he says that this is what we're doing, this, this is, you know, what, what you should be doing. Um, if it was something that was so horrible, or you had all these concerns, again, you should've come to us instead of kind of letting this all build up. And I just feel like this is, this is accumulation of several different things, and it's ballooned now. Um, and we definitely need a clearer, um...
Job description?
Yeah, I guess that's what we're gonna say again. I mean, just...
Yeah, you, I mean, you... Not just, not what I mean, but... Still gonna say something at the end, and all of our job descriptions say, "Or..."
Right.
"The supervisor says within reason."
Exactly.
We all have that plenty of...
Yeah, any other job...
He is your supervisor, and, you know, what he says goes, obviously, if it's going oil underground or something, absolutely not, or if you have concerns, you know, within reason. You know, if you're concerned, then you come to us.
I believe everything was asked within reason.
You know, and, you know, on the other spectrum, you know, this kind of same thing with Bob, this virus, you know? Kind of, if things come up, maybe deal with them and let us know. Do, you know what I'm saying? Like, instead of waiting...
When a time went on?
Right, so that, just...
Anytime, anytime things go over any length of time on anybody's side, um, it just festers.
And we don't wanna have, you know, we wanna have a good...
And it never gets any better, it never gets resolved, so...
Well, you know, and, and one of the biggest things, the, the tough part is that you have to determine who's telling the truth, because as you make that statement, according to the supervisor, he came to you the day that he, he refused to do that. He had a statement with you within a day, so...
I don't believe anybody did, I...
Well, no, I know, I'm just saying. Well, well, the difference is, is the big difference is whether or not they had the conversation two months earlier and was asked to do it. Do you know what I mean? So as Bob, as Ed tells, kind of says to Bob, you know, "You gotta come to us sooner." Bob's saying, "I did the same day." So the question is, who's telling the truth that it really happened two months prior to that?
And I don't believe something like that. I mean, I don't feel, personally, I...
You almost can't prove it. One, one way or another, it's the other.
I still think it's irrelevant anyways. Because honestly, it doesn't matter whether or not he asked him to do it two months, whether or not he interested two months ago. He did say that he would two months before that. So that's kind of relevant. It's when you ask your employee on the spot to do a task, and he says, "No," that's no. You, you, you said you're not gonna do the job. That's what we're discussing here right now. Not what happened two months ago, and what kind of a price they got out of, they could get out of a ramp. That's irrelevant. It was at the point in time he was asked to do the job, he said, "No." And the reasons he gave bounced off the wall from this, that, everything else, other than, "No, I don't wanna do the job."
So where do we go from there?
So the board needs to decide if they're gonna take any action, if at all, if not at all. I'm gonna read you your section on disciplinary action and termination, and then you'll decide what you wanna do from here. Whatever the supervisor's judgment, employee performance, attitude, work habits, or personal conduct at any time falls below a satisfactory level, the supervisor shall inform the employee promptly and specifically of such lapses, and give counsel and assistance. If appropriate and justified, a reasonable, a reasonable period of time for improvement may be allowed before initiating action. In some instances, a specific incident may justify disciplinary action, including discharge. However, the action to be taken depends on the seriousness of the incident and the employee's past practice and conduct. Employees shall be disciplined by the board of selectmen. Corrective act, action may be initiated. Among actions which may be subject to disciplinary actions are the following: conviction of a felony or misdemeanor involving mortality; the violation of a department policy or procedure, or failure to obey any proper direction given by a supervisor; offensive conduct or language in public or towards fellow employees; inability to perform duties and responsibilities required as detailed in job descriptions; carelessness or neglect with money's or other town properties; reoccurring, uh, abstinence or retardness. Actions will normally be initiated in the following: verbal, warning, written, warning, suspension, termination. Disciplinary may be initiated at all of those levels listed above. Actually, any different bounds, and that's changed, but thank you. I found a more updated one, but I don't think we've changed that section, so I'm not gonna go back through it. So you need to decide, um, if any of these actions for disciplinary action happened. Uh, there's certainly no conviction, violation, or failure to obey any proper direction from the supervisor; offensive conduct and language towards fellow employees. So you need to decide if at all those, any of those were, um, more likely to not happen.
The second one was...
Right. Failure to obey any proper direction given by the supervisor. Um, are there any concerns about the statement that he made in front of David in regards to the supervisor?
Those I called for.
That's a conduct or language in public towards fellow employees. Um, again, you have...
What did I mean, what that, what, what it specifically was?
That he was a man.
Okay. He thought he was a man.
Okay.
But again, the two of them tell different stories as far as the... Right, was it the last name tied, or was it just the statement?
Yeah, okay.
Um, carelessness or neglect, or reoccurring absence, or... So, um, it does say, I mean, discipline may be initiated at any of these levels listed above. So you can start anywhere, depending on what you feel the severity of it is. You also can take absolutely no action if you feel like you don't have enough, uh, just, enough proof on any, any level. You also can take absolutely no action if you feel like you don't have enough, just enough proof on any, any level.
Nobody's denying it.
No.
No.
So it's kind of hard to say there was no proof.
No, I mean, definitely, you know, a warning, a written warning saying that, you know, you do have to follow what your supervisor says. If there's an issue with that, then you need to come to us, okay? That's.
My big concern is we've got two employees that I'm not so sure they're going to be able to work together.
I know.
That's my big concern. I don't know whether they can.
Put this behind them.
Coexist.
And move on or not.
Should we, can we give it time? Like, I don't know, I don't know.
What I found out in this whole thing was it seemed to me that the employee was playing supervisor. He was dictating when he was going to do things, what he was going to get paid, and whether or not the task he was doing was legit or not. And it's awful hard to have a supervisor and then have somebody play supervisor.
Right.
You can't have both.
Undermined.
Undermined.
Undermined, isn't it?
And I, I agree with you 100% Ed, that I believe this is going to be a work environment that's going to be very hard for both of them. The, what we're going to do from here. We've obviously, we've got to write up the individual for not doing his task.
For his coordination, so it wasn't.
Yeah. The unfortunate part about it is here, as we're discussing on one issue, when it was really an accumulation of two, because it was actually done twice. But unfortunately, the supervisor did not write him up at that point in time, which is, which is a gift to the employee. Because honestly, if I was a supervisor and someone told me I wasn't going to do a job in the real world, other than municipalities, state of man, you fire well. When somebody doesn't do their task, they go down the road. The employee is very fortunate that we go by different standards here. Because honestly, you'd be going down the road. So the state, the statement about being a man, I think ought to be, I think something there has got to be documented. I like that it documented, because I don't know when he said that, what the individual, what the supervisor would be if he wasn't. Okay? But the idea of not doing the task that was asked twice, I think is enough there to, I want to, I want to.
Have I written, no, I mean, because it's happened twice. That's the only thing I agree with.
Ed?
Yeah, nothing left, Ed.
Do you agree with, do you agree?
I think he needs to be written up for it, yeah, definitely. Because he did refuse to do a task. The task was not found unsafe or unhealthy or detrimental. You know, it didn't fall under any of those things. So I do, I do feel the individual, the employee needs to be written up for that. As far as making a note, as far as the man comment, I don't know. It doesn't, it's almost irrelevant. It's part of the, it's part of the heated discussion, is what it was.
So.
I've had discussions that went a lot heated, more heated than that, so.
So even though we're an open executive session, still an executive session, we can't make any decisions, but it sounds like we have all given an opinion. So we're going to come out of an executive session, you still have to make a motion to come out. And then someone is going to make a motion to whatever that person decides and reference them as, you know, employee A, and make whatever, make whatever statement you want. Just make sure that you're, you're specific in what you expect that, that to be.
So we are, we're, we're still in executive.
We are still in the executive session. Even though the employee has asked for it to be an open, we still have to come out. And we, and you can't make decisions in executive sessions, whether they're open or not. It's all deliberations, you've given your opinions, you think a little more than another one. It's going to be a matter of who makes a motion in seconds and what you can add or support. What I'm saying is that if you decided, let's just say, to do a verbal warning, you would need to say, we hereby, you know, motion to do a verbal warning, that the liaison will give a verbal warning and it will be regarding this matter. Whatever level you decide, if you even decide to, you've got to be specific in your motion as to, you know, what the written warning is for and, you know, what remedy action or what, you know, what you expect to see in that letter, so that it can be documented and obviously created. Just say, so should an employee feel aggravated concerning the interpretation, meaning, or application of town personnel policies? Within five working days from the incident, the employee shall submit the details of the grievance in writing to the department head. Within 30 days after that, the department head shall meet with the employee for the purpose of discussing the grievance. And the department head shall render their final decision within 30 days. The board of selectmen shall serve as the final appear, appeal, or direct line of review that should the employee feel aggravated with the actions the department had. Kind of contradicts the fact that it says that the board of selectmen, that the employee shall be disciplined or caused to be terminated by the board of selectmen, but. All right, anything else before we come out of executive session? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion from out of executive session for 05, 6, 8, 1 personnel issue.
6:47.
6:47.
We're a second.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay, we're out of the executive session. We discussed during the executive session, the issue. Feel that, hold on.
Yes, you're going to go to share.
Okay. Do we have to make a decision whether or not this personnel issue should be written up for not doing a task that was asked? So.
Well, not so much written up, but.
What level?
Yeah, what level? Yeah, yeah, verbal, write-up, or termination?
Yup.
It's pretty much the three choices.
Yeah. I believe because of the individual, the first time didn't get written up, or it was verbal, kind of did.
Yeah, even combat.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to say.
And so to me, he's already got his verbal. And so I'm recommending that we write him up for the, doing the task that was asked.
Follow up with this written, I mean, like, should we be checking in once we get?
So that, is that a motion?
I don't, I mean, a motion, I can't make a motion.
You can make a motion.
Yeah. Make a motion that we, Jeffrey Murray, write him up.
Let's do employee, make an employee and supervisor, that way we know exactly what's going.
Yeah.
That work.
Employee written up for not doing task that was asked of him. And so he, for this file, for further, further viewing, we have a motion. A second.
Second.
All in favor?
So I think Kim wanted some discussion.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if we're supposed to do this, okay. I don't know, I mean, should there be some follow-up to make sure everybody's doing okay? I mean, I feel there should be, you know, if we're going back to work together, we got to try and make sure you know what you should be doing. If he doesn't, I want you to be on top of it.
So are these things are going to be in the other letter that we're?
Well, that's what I'm, yes, for those to be put into, do you know what I'm saying?
Well, this is a thing that should be happening anyways.
So you may just make an amendment to the, to the motion. So just make an amendment that you want to have a follow-up within 30 days or?
That's what I was going to say, kind of how many days do you think? Let's make an amendment to the motion that, you know, we will follow up. I would like to do two weeks and 30 days, just to see how things. Every two weeks, you know, and see how things are going.
You want to put an ending on it or you want to leave it open?
Leave it open for now, no, just.
I'll wait a second on the amendment.
Seconded.
Okay.
So for clarity, so the original motion is that a letter of, a letter go in the personnel, in the employee's personnel file, pursuant to the portion of the personnel file that indicates failure to obey any proper direction by supervisor? That's what seconded the amendment, is that in addition to the letter, you want a follow-up with both employees?
Yeah, just to, you know, how's it going?
Two weeks.
How's it going, huh? Yeah.
Is that something that you want to do with just the liaison? So that it's not a meeting? Or if we're going to do it with everybody here again, we'll have a posted executive session? The problem is not knowing what's coming, what may be brought for in two weeks and not right.
I mean, I think the liaison can do it. If there are issues, then he comes back and then we go from there.
And I hate to step, I mean, I don't want to, I just want to make sure that, because if a concern is brought up there, whenever we have hearings, the employee has a right to know what the concerns are being brought for. So if we do this meeting in two weeks, no one can be blindsided about it. I mean, we can't just all of a sudden come up with all these concerns about Kim. So if we start with a liaison and town administrator, we'll meet with them in two weeks. And I would recommend that we meet with them individually. And then decide if there's enough to then call for another executive session and follows proper, proper steps that way. Does that seem like it makes sense?
Yeah.
As far as the letter, are there any specifics that it shall include?
I guess we probably ought to include the ramp, so we can describe what he did.
What the infraction was.
Okay, so I can draft that for you.
Yeah, that definitely shows.
I think that's all.
And is the employee given any timeframe to remedy? And essentially to not do this type of thing again that you've determined that, that happened? Is there any?
I don't, I don't believe that's, you know, that's the unfortunate thing about getting written up. It's, it's, you know, it's like you're going to get pulled over by a car and you'll owe your license for a long time, you know?
Just want to make sure the letter's drafted appropriately.
There's in some kind of rule that says that was 20 days.
No, I just know, the, the policy is, you know, talks about you can give remedy action if you, you know, we're being able to. Remedy action will normally be initiated, you can give him, you know, the option to do A, B, and C. Do we know that if this task has now been completed?
I do not know.
Because I, I guess the million dollar question is if the task has not been completed. I mean, is that a good way of wrapping this up by having the task get completed?
I would believe so.
Can we ask if it's been completed?
Yeah, yeah.
It's been completed on.
So that's staffed?
It's constructed by the top management, but on here.
So it's not installed?
No, that's different, right. It's a bell sample, but.
All right, who needs a?
So we have an amendment?
Yeah.
So we have to.
Vote on the amendment?
Vote on the amendment. So we have a motion that we will write up.
Correct.
Including.
Employee A.
The employee with the ramp and a two-week checkup.
Correct. The town administrator.
Every two weeks, every two, every two weeks until.
Where, we have no tools. Do we have tools there to finish the job?
Well, yeah.
Okay, I'm just.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
What is it, you intend to put in the letter that the, the task will be completed by the supervisor and the employee?
That's up to the supervisor at this point.
All right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't think that needs to be in the letter.
Okay, all right, so motion, the amendment, do we vote on the amendment?
We haven't yet, I'm looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Discussion, no, all in favor? Okay, now we need a motion. You have a motion already?
Yeah, we did that.
Oh, because we, I thought we were doing an amendment, okay.
That was the amendment, so now we're looking for a vote on that, that whole thing. Because you had to approve the amendment, which you did.
Yeah.
So now we're looking for a vote on the entire instruction.
So do we have to repeat everything?
No, no.
Just hold on.
Okay.
Call for a vote, all in favor?
We're not on the original.
On the original, yeah. Okay, so we're done with our executive session.
We've been done that for a little while.
Well.
How about the slide?
I haven't eaten yet.
So how about if we make a motion to?
Adjourn?
Adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor? Okay.
Thank you both for coming.
Yeah, you appreciate the time.